Okay. So, welcome to the first session on structural change and development macroeconomics. And I give the floor to Professor Orellero, who will talk on monetary policy rules and the structure of wage bargaining in a New Canaan General Equilibrium Model. So the floor is yours.
Many thanks, Gennaro. Well, good morning for everyone. It's a pleasure to be presenting a paper in this conference. So without delays, let me share my presentation with you. Everybody see my slides? Yes, yes, I can see it.
Yes.
Okay. So I have made a little change in the title of the paper. And the new title is Monetary Policy Rules and Wage Bargaining Structure in the New Canaanian General Equilibrium Model with Strategic Interaction between Unions and Monetary Authority. This paper is co-authored by me and my former student, Flavio Augusto Correa Basilio. This is a chapter of his PhD thesis. But nowadays, he is the president of one branch of Bank of Brazil, called Bank of Brazil Technology and Services. All right. The motivation for this paper is the following one. The European data about inflation and unemployment shows that the European countries, presented in the period 2011 to 2021, presented remarkable differences in the average rate of unemployment, but only little differences in the rate of inflation. This established fact may suggest the existence of large differences between equilibrium rate of unemployment of European countries. This table that I made with data from Eurostat shows two groups of countries, eight European countries in total. The first group was the four major economies of the euro area, Spain, Italy, Germany, and France. The second group was the Nordic countries, except Norway, because some data from Norway was missing, plus Austria. So at the upper level of the table, we can see the unemployment figures for the countries between this period of 2011 and 2021. And on the below, below the table, we can see the figures for the rate of inflation. Well, let us concentrate just on the average of unemployment and inflation for these groups. We can see that for this period, there is a large difference between the average rate of unemployment in the four major economies of the euro area. The average unemployment rate was almost 11%, but when we compare with the Nordic countries, plus Austria, the average was a little below 7%. So a difference of almost four percentage points. But when we compare to inflation, the inflation average is more or less the same. The four major economies of the euro area has an average rate of inflation of 1.27% on the period and the average inflation of the Nordic countries, plus Austria, a little higher, but just 1.4080%. Well, so the question is, why equilibrium unemployment rate differs? There is an old hypothesis stated in 1988 by Kaufman and Driffl that says that different configurations of the wage bargaining structure generate different results in terms of economic performance. According to Kaufman and Driffl, the relationship between centralization of wage bargaining and wage formation is a nonlinear one. A lower equilibrium unemployment rate is thus both consistent with a high and a low level of centralization of wage bargaining. This result shows that strong unions are not necessarily associated with high unemployment. There is three different centralization levels in which wages can be settled. At firm level, there is a specific union at each level for each firm. At industry level, there is a union that sets wages for an entire industrial sector. And at the economy, and at the level of the economy as a whole, there is a single union that sets the wages of law workers in the economy. This is the so-called Swedish model. Well, in each case, it is assumed by Kaufman and Driffl model and the contributions after that, that the union has the same objective function in which the utility of the trade union grows with the real wage and the level of employment. And the wages fixed by a monopolistic union, and the firm decides on how many workers will hire, given the way set by the unions. As wage formation becomes more decentralized, the union is more concerned about the potentially negative effects of a real wage increases of the employment of its members. And as increasing wages makes the firm less competitive with respect to the others. At the industry or sector level, this effect is more limited due to less substitability between products from different industries compared to the substitability between products of different firms in the same industry. When wage formation takes place at level of the economy, trade unions cannot ignore the effect of wage increases and prices. In the simple case where the price setting curve is horizontal, a national union will simply choose to maximize the level of employment. So we have here a simple representation of the Kaufman-Driffl hypothesis. The figure at the left, we can see the so-called PSWS model as presented in the Blanchard undergraduate textbook. The line in blue is the PS curve, is the price setting curve. We are assuming that prices are settled by a fixed markup on unit average costers. And in that, we see the wage setting curve, which shows the real wage desired by the unions according to the level of employment. Well, the position of the wage setting curve will depend on the level of centralization of wage bargaining. The idea is that wage bargaining at intermediate level, made for instance at the sector level, implies a curve that is more to the left. And it means that the equilibrium rate of unemployment would be lower for an intermediate level of wage bargaining than when compared to more decentralized or more centralized levels of wage bargaining. So on the right, we see the inverted U-shaped curve relating the equilibrium rate of unemployment with the centralization of wage bargaining. This is the so-called Kaufman-Driffl hypothesis. Well, the next question to motivate this model is, is it possible for the equilibrium rate of employment can be affected by monetary policy? Well, when we compare the two groups of countries presented before, it is not worthy that the second group had two members that does not belong to Eurozone, which are Sweden and Denmark. Is it possible that the existence of an autonomous monetary policy, even when it's conducted according with some monetary rule, can affect the equilibrium rate of employment without producing a higher level of inflation? Well, conventional economic theory establishes sufficient set of assumptions under which monetary policy has no effect over the real variables of the economy. And the assumptions are four: rational expectations, perfect competition, complete information, and absence of nominal rigidities. Well, what happens if we simply drop assumption two of perfect competition? Well, as demonstrated in the seminar paper of Blanchard and Kiotaki of 1987, money will remain neutral even in the presence of monopolistic competition. Instead, moreover, Blanchard and Fisher, in his graduate textbook, also conclude that macroeconomic results are unchanged, even the economy comes out of perfect competition for imperfect competition. And moreover, they point out that money is neutral under monopolistic competition, as it is under perfect competition. Well, if monopolistic competition is not able to generate non-utroity of money, what would it take for money to have real effect of the economy? Well, the central argument developed in this article is that in order for the market power of firms or workers in the figure of trade unions to affect the real side of the economy, there's establishing the non-utroity of the monetary policy rule, there must be a trojanity of agents that fix wages and prices. In this sense, the arguments presented in this article do not challenge the theory of money neutrality. But by modeling the supply channel through the strategic interaction of monetary authority with labor unions, it will show that even though money is neutral, the monetary policy rule affects real variables of the economy. As in this context, it is argued that money provides the platform for strategic interaction between price and wage makers and that monetary authority, and therefore, shows that nominal variables are relevant from the point of view of strategic interaction, since the decision variable of the labor unions is the nominal wage, as already stated by Keynes on chapter two of his general theory. The idea of working with multiple agents setting prices and wages within the New Canaanian framework, instead of adopting this hypothesis of nominal rigidity, was pioneered by an article, by two articles of Soskis and Iverson, one of 1998 and the other of 2000. The main result presented by the authors is that nominal rigidity is not a necessary condition for the non-utroity of monetary policy, as suggested by Blanchard and Kiotaki. According to these, to the authors, if there are multiple independent agents setting wages and or prices, monetary policy is non-neutral, even in the case of flexible prices. It can be said, therefore, that Soskis and Iverson inaugurated a line of research based on strategic interaction of multiple agents with the monetary authority, where prices are flexible and monetary policy rule is non-neutral. In this case, the innovation proposed by this article is to complement the theoretical framework proposed by Blanchard and Kiotaki and Soskis and Iverson, introducing imperfections in the labor market in an environment of multiple agents in conditions of monopolistic competition. Well, we have three contributions for the literature. The first concerns the issue of non-utroity of the monetary policy rule, which is obtained even in an environment of flexible flexibility of wages and prices. Taking as a starting point the model of Soskis and Iverson, according to which the monetary policy rule matters to determine the equilibrium rate, the equilibrium employment rate, when there are many different agents setting prices, even in the presence of rational expectations, complete informations, and commitment on the part of the central bank, and absence of nominal rigidity. The model presented here generalizes the previous results of the literature. In the Soskis and Iverson model, the monetary policy rule is exogenously determined, whereas here it is endogenous. Does the scope of analysis expanded? Since by making monetary policy endogenous, it is now possible to analyze the problems of a strategic interaction between the central bank and the wage and price setters. In addition, as the monetary policy rule is different from the one proposed by Soskis and Iverson, the monetary authority is allowed to react even more restrictively in terms of the money supply against wage pressure by labor units. The second contribution is to show that the strategic interaction between monetary authority and labor market institutions generates the so-called Comfers-Driffl effect. It is demonstrated that different configurations of the wage and bargaining structure generate different results in terms of economic performance. In this context, unlike the Soskis and Iverson model, our results replicates the idea that the structure of labor markets is increasingly perceived as a determinant of the macroeconomic performance of a country. The main conclusion is that extremes work best. In fact, when wage determinations occurs in a decentralized or centralized framework, economic results in terms of unemployment, real wages and inflation are better. And the wage bargaining determination, when wage determination occurs at intermediate level, generated an EU inverted relationship between the level of wage and unemployment rate. And the third contribution is to build a model that allow the joint analysis of labor market institutions represented by multiple age and price setting agents with the presence of a central bank committed to the inflation target. Thus, it is expected to unite the main results of the monetary policy literature with the literature on labor economics, in which the institutional aspect of the labor market matters in determining the monetary optimal monetary policy. By adding the institutional dimension of economics and macroeconomic policy, considering both the supply and demand channel, a new line of research of economic literature is created, which has its starting point, the seminar article by Soskis and Iverson. But the model, the structure of the model is very heavy. I will just present some of the main equations of the model. Okay, well, first, the general structure. The economy is supposed, is composed by G firms that compete by selling differentiated goods, which are substitutes one to another, but they are not perfect substitutes. Its firm produce its own good by acting as a monopolistic competitor. It is admitted that variations in the price fixed by a firm has effect over the demand of other firms according to the magnitude of the elasticity of substitution between goods, so that this amount of this effect is a function of the number of the firms in the economy. A quantity of work, LG, is available to each firm. However, these workers can only be employed if they first join a labor union. In addition, each union acts as a monopolist, so that each firm has its own union. As in Kaufman-Driffl and Soskis and Iverson models, labor unions are supposed to set nominal wages, firms determine the prices of their goods, and markets determines the demand of the various goods in the economy and amount of labor used in production. In addition, each labor unit in setting the wage of its workers takes as given the wage choices of other labor unions. Additionally, it's assumed that monetary authority responds to the aggregate price movement according to the chosen optimal monetary policy rule. As a result, the economy is modeled according to the specification of NASH's equilibrium concept. Given the union's wage choice, no labor union has incentive to change its choice of wage. Well, the structure of the model, the firms, we have G is the number of firms in the economy. We have K consumer workers, the distribution of workforce, the definition of an employment. Equation one is the production function for each firm. One adds the aggregation of the production function. Equations, equation two is the utility function of the labor union. Equation three and four defines the consumption basket of the trade union. Equation four determines the price level. The union faces a budget constraint. So we have a maximization problem given by equation six. And the equation seven and eight gives the first order condition for the maximization problem that determines the marginaline demands of consumption of G goods and money balances. And equation 10, the market demand of each G good depends on two components, the relative price of the good in relation to the general price level, with the parameter theta describing the demand elasticity of substitution, and two, actual macroeconomic conditions and money stock determined by the central bank. Okay, well.
Pardon, hold on a minute. Go to the conclusions.
Oh, well, well, there is a lot of maximizations, one and so forth. Okay, well, the basic conclusion of this model is that Lambida is the wage premium, which is the difference between the real wage compared to the level of rate in perfect competition. This graph shows that in intermediate level of centralization of wage bargaining, the wage premium is higher is why, because in the intermediate level wage bargaining, the employment, equilibrium rate of employment is lower. Okay, final remarks. Throughout this article, it was presented the New Canaanian General Equilibrium Model with both imperfections in the markets of goods and labor, where institutions of the labor market, together with the monetary policy rule adopted by the central bank, play a relevant role in determining the performance of the economy. Indeed, labor unions and monetary authority interact strategically in a Stackelberg-like, non-competitive game, which allowed us to reach three important results. First, monetary policy rules not neutral. Decentralized and centralized wage determination regimes promote better economic results than intermediate regimes, corroborating the thesis of Kaufman and Driffl. And nominal variables provide the platform for strategic interaction between monetary authority and trade unions. This last result means that real variables cannot be determined independently of nominal variables invalidating the so-called classical dichotomy. Thus, by modeling the supply side of the economy by labor unions, institutions, it is demonstrated that even though the level of money stock is neutral, the monetary policy rule affects real variables of the economy, since nominal variables provide the platform for strategic interactions between price wage setters and monetary authority. Finally, the model development shows that nominal variables are relevant from the point of view of just strategic interaction, since the decision variable for labor unions is nominal wages. To achieve this result, this objective, the institutional dimension of the economy was added in macroeconomic policy, considering both the supply and demand side of the economy, having as a starting point the seminar article of Soskis and Iverson. So that is all that I have for to speak. That's my contact. May, thank you.
Thank you. I think we don't have time for discussion right now. We will move to the next speaker. And hopefully, if we have time, we will have questions at the end of the session. Thank you. So the next paper is on Impact of Green Research Network on International Environmental Competitiveness. Valeria Minishani, you have.
Thank you, thank you very much. So this is a joint paper with Giulio Guarini from the University of Tusha and Andrea Fabrizi, Presidente del Consiglio dei Ministri. It is about the determinants of international competitiveness in the green, in the green sector. So the idea is that there is a debate on the green transition. In particular, at the European level, there have been many, many instruments that have been conceived in order to favor this transition. But there is also debate on the extent to which this can harm the competitiveness of European firms. So the idea here is to look at whether there are some instruments that are able to reconcile the green transition with also the competitiveness of countries and firms in the international market. In order to do this, we basically estimate a technology gap model of international competitiveness, where competitiveness in the green sector is driven by technological competitiveness on the one hand, but also the participation of countries in international networks. So basically, therefore, our contribution is to link some different theoretical frameworks. On the one hand, the technology gap trade model, where international competitiveness in the long run is driven by technological competitiveness. And on the other hand, the literature on the importance of networks for technological innovation, in particular in the green sector. So what about the technology gap model of international trade? This goes back to the theory of Posner, and then it has been elaborated within the evolutionary approach. And the idea is that what drives competitiveness in the long run is not so much a price competitiveness, but rather is technological competitiveness. And so it is not such, so much a matter of comparative advantages across countries, but it's more a matter of absolute advantages that are acquired over time by investing resources in research and development and in human, in human capital. There have been, let's say, many theoretical papers looking at this, basically working on this type of models. And there have been also many empirical investigations. And what has come out from these empirical investigations is the confirmation that both at the country level, at the sectoral level, and more recently also a paper by Dossi and Co. at the firm level, it seems that international competitiveness, in particular measured through export market shares, is mainly driven by technology factors. And indeed, prices do not matter so much. And also, when we look at wages, indeed, there is often a confirmation of the so-called Calder paradox, that basically countries that offer higher wages are also increasing over time market shares in international markets, rather than reducing market shares. This approach has been applied in many different contexts. This paper is the first one that adopts this kind of approach to look at competitiveness in the green sector. And moreover, we also want to bridge the literature on eco-opener innovation. There is an important contribution by Ghizetti and Co. that look at the importance of collaboration among different players, firms, institutions, public research centers, universities, in the green sector, and how this is an important driver of technological innovation in this sector, more than in other sectors. So it seems that collaboration is particularly important due to the, let's say, different kinds of competencies that are required to carry out green innovation, and due also to the complexity. and due also to the complexity of this kind of of innovations. And so um in this context, we basically try to measure these um collaborations through the participation of different actors in framework programs financed by the European Commission. And in particular, we identify among the different framework programs those that have a green content, not only a green content, but that match together the issue of sustainability with the issue of technological innovation for sustainability. Um, and finally, let's say, the third point in our, in our framework is whether there is a sort of complementarity between, let's say, participation in international networks, but also national absorptive capacity. So it is, uh, the idea is that taking part in international networks can lead to different gains according to the technological level of the different countries and industries that are involved in, in these, in these networks. So on the one hand, we measure the extent of participation, therefore networks. But on the other hand, we also look at the technological capability of the country measured by green patents. And we look at the interaction between these two components. So we look at both the single and the joint impact of networks and own national technological capability. And finally, we look at the third source of complementarity. We look basically at the type of participation in, in networks distinguishing between uh firms, so the business sector, um universities and public research centers. And we look at whether some of these actors matter more than others and whether there are also complementarity between the different actors. So, uh, for example, networks that are more mixed in terms of competencies that come from the business sector of the university and the public research sector um have a higher impact in terms of international competitiveness with respect to uh networks that are, let's say, only among firms or among uh business uh or among universities. Um, the empirical specification of the model, as I was saying before, it's basically an application of the technology gap trade model. So the dependent variable is export market share in the green sector. Here, there are many different, let's say, classification of what can be considered the green exports. We follow the one that is normally the most widely adopted one, so we basically follow the OECD classification. And we relate competitiveness to the usual control variables, therefore unit labor cost, uh investment, population and the exchange rate. And we add to this technological competitiveness that is measured through green patents. The participation in international networks measured through, basically, participation in European framework programs with a green content and the interaction between um technological competitiveness and participation in networks. We also uh have a more, let's say, elaborated model where we look at the interaction among each participant, distinguishing between firms, universities and public research centers and um country domestic technological competitiveness. Um, we, uh, the, the model is estimated on twenty-six countries, mainly European countries. Over a period between two thousand and four and two thousand and fifteen, here the limiting, let's say, variable is the green competitiveness because data are available only up to two thousand and fifteen. And the most, let's say, uh, com, uh, the uh original part of the paper is basically to uh look at these EU open data sources that are the framework programs, starting from the fifth to the seventh framework program and to take out of those programs those that have a green uh content and looking at participation of firms, universities and a public research centers of the different European, European countries and over time. Um, focusing just on this, this is just to give you an idea of over the whole time period, um, the presence of the three different institutional sectors in these programs, um distinguished by country. And we see that Germany ranked first, followed by UK, France, Italy, and so on and so forth. And we can also see the composition among firms, um public research center and, and universities that is more or less balanced in the different, in the different countries. So, looking at the main results, I will show you just the tables um with, let's say, the, the most interesting variables. Um, we have, let's say, column, um, one is the base model. Column two introduces networks. Column three introduces the interaction between domestic technological capability and participation in international networks. And column four and five are some robustness checks looking at models with time legs. Um, the results confirm the technology gap model for green competitiveness. Indeed, um, uh, invest, having a, a green patents standardized by population is an important, is the most important source of ability for country to export green goods. And we also find evidence of the importance of participating in European framework programs with a green content. Uh, this also has a very positive impact on the international competitiveness in, in the green sector. And moreover, we find evidence of this complementarity is basically the sign that you see on the product between uh, uh, the technological variable and the network variable um in all specifications. Um, the last set of results focuses specifically on the complementarity, distinguishing between the business sector, the government sector and universities, higher education sector. And here, I think it's quite interesting to see that both, all three kinds of sectors have a positive interaction with the domestic, um, with domestic efforts in technology. Uh, but, uh, but we can see this in columns one, two and three respectively for firms, the government sector and the higher education sector. But when we look at, let's say, balancing between subjects in the framework programs, it appears that universities are particularly important. So the presence of universities in these networks enhances the absorption capacity of the business sector and of the government sector. And this, I think, is important because it suggests that uh the kind of competencies that are required for the green transition have also uh are basic ones and therefore require the participation of the um of universities in networks in order to, let's say, interact with, with firms for enhancing the competitiveness of, of, of firms. Um, uh, this is just a summary of basically what I have already said. So I can move directly to the conclusions and, and policy implications. Uh, so um this paper contributes to the literature in several respects. It is the first one that looks at an application of the technology gap trade model to the green sector and therefore emphasizes. I've been working also a lot on, let's say, the Porter hypothesis in the context of green competitiveness. And I think there are important, let's say, um, feedbacks between the two literature. Uh, the idea is that um it's important to conceive some instruments that help firms and governments to uh um face the challenges of restructuring the economy in the direction of, of the green transition. And regulation alone is not enough. There are important complementarities between regulation and scientific advance. And in order to have, let's say, an improvement in the technological capability of firms is not enough that they have to fulfill specific regulations, but they also need to have the competencies to do this without losing international competitiveness. And in order to achieve this kind of objective, uh, it is important to favor networks where firms interact with universities and public research centers. And this goes back to the idea that um, uh, this kind of innovation requires heterogeneous competencies and therefore investing in building these heterogeneous competencies is the way to go. And this can be done at the national level, but this is not sufficient. It should be done also at the international level, especially at the European level. And therefore, the framework programs are an important instrument for doing this and might also be a little bit more coordinated with other kinds of policies that are more based on regulation. Um, and that's it. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you also for respecting your time limit. And now the floor goes to Gabriel Porcelle, who will talk about technical change and sustainable development. So Gabriel, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Gennaro. Uh, please, could you tell me five minutes before the end of the, of my time? Just to be sure that I, I keep my presentation within the limits of, of the time. So I will um share a presentation. So, uh, thank you very much for the invitation to this seminar. Uh, so what I will present is a, a simple model in which uh, we try with Michael Osor, Jose Eduardo Alatorre, we try to uh put the three dimensions of a sustainable development within a, a single analytical framework, which is at the same time simple and uh easy to manipulate and help to make some simulations about uh the policies that we need to attain sustainable development in Latin America. This is a, a simple model that, that has been applied to, to the Latin American case. Uh, but I think it could be useful to uh also to uh other, other countries as well. Um, defining, the first thing is to define sustainable development. Uh, we consider a growth path to be sustainable if it complies with three conditions. Uh, the first is to be sustainable from an economic perspective, which uh for us in a center-periphery system, uh this means that growth can be sustainable from the point of view of the balance of payments constraint. Uh, it should be inclusive, you know, we are talking in the periphery of countries which show very high levels of inequality of poverty, which have very negative implications from a political and social point of view. So for having a sustainable path, we need that uh inequality reduced and we are in, in a process of eradicating poverty. Finally, uh, it has to respect the ecological limits of the planet and protect the environment. Uh, as, as I mentioned, I will look at the problem from a center-periphery perspective. I will look at a street regimes, a demand regime, which is related not to international competitive, it's a pattern of specialization, a technological regime which has to do with a process of learning in the country. And I will consider two dimensions in learning. One, which is the process of increasing labor productivity. And the other one has to do with catching up in green technology. A point that brilliantly was discussed by Melissa in, in the previous paper. And it has a lot to do with, with what I'm going to present here. Uh, finally, uh, uh, social inclusion is not only a, a matter of growth and a wages unemployment, but it's also a, a a challenge in terms of redefining the institutions of the country in favor of a, a relative power of workers in wage bargaining. So uh this, this aspect of um the transformation of the economy uh would be considered as well, which is the need to have in parallel a, a social transformation and a redefinition of a relative power in the economy. The demand regime, as I, as I mentioned, is, it has, it's related or it has a focus on uh the, the behavior of the income elasticity of exports and imports according, according to the well-known model uh by a third one. Uh, so I will start the, the discussion of the uh demand regime using a, the basic Cervell equation and the behavior of the income elasticity of exports and imports, which are a function of the technology gap. This is the, the main hypothesis and it has, of course, uh, much to do with the in technology gap trade theory that Dossi and others developed. The technological regime, I will look at two a different directions for technical change. One direction is to increase A, which is the rate of growth of labor productivity. And the other is to uh in reduce the emissions per unit of GDP produced. I mean, to increase the efficiency of, of emissions in the sense that we can decouple, no, decouple the, the growth of emissions from the growth of GDP. Now, decarbonization basically, and this will be uh considered to be related to green innovations uh and, and uh uh all, all, all the changes in the sources of energy and production processes that are related to decarbonization. Uh, the importance of these two directions of technical change are assumed to be um a, a, a policy decision that is exogenous to the model. We assume that there are a large share of informal workers in the economy, which is a quite reasonable assumption for a peripherian economy. And um, but we, we are not assuming that we have an infinite supply of labor. Uh, this is a, a, an economy in which there are some kind of organization of workers in unions, in the formal sector, and there is. in the formal sector, and there is a response of the wage share to the increase in the share of formal workers in total employment. So we have a W in a function in which wage shares respond positively to the share of formal employment in the economy. The reason of that is, of course, the idea that in the formal labor market, workers have more rights, more capacity to organize, more capacity to have an influence and incidence in policy. The growth of employment equals the rate of growth of the economy. You see that the hats are rates of growth, proportional rates of growth, and is formal employment, and the rate of growth of formal employment equals the rate of growth of the economy, which we assume is the rate of growth given by the balance of payments constraint and hence by the income elasticity of exports and imports minus the rate of growth of labor productivity. And the grace of the rate of growth of labor productivity in turn is what we call a modified Caldorian push function of learning by doing or technical change. It is modified because, as you see in the equation, the rate of growth of labor productivity equals a constant, equals the Calzun-Bergen coefficient, which is G1, which is the increase in labor productivity parry pass with the increase in the rate of growth of the economy, plus a term, a third term, in which is the level, the share of the level of formal employment in the economy. Because we believe that the Silo-Slavini hypothesis, the idea that when the economy moves towards full employment and moves towards Haiga wages, then there is an effort to reduce labor in the production process, to increase labor productivity. So there is an impact of the increase in the labor share on the rate of growth of labor productivity. This gives us an equilibrium, a share of formal employment in the economy, which depends on the demand side, because it depends on the rate of growth of the economy, which is a function of the income elasticity of exports and imports, but also depends on the technological coefficients, the Calzun-Bergen coefficient, and the impact that the increase in the informal employment in the economy, the impact that this increase has on the direction of technical change and the growth of labor productivity, the Silo-Slavini effect I mentioned. Which is, I think it changed, sorry. Okay. One of the important assumptions that the model has is that price competitiveness does not affect the income elasticity rate. So there is no effect on international competitiveness of the increase in labor productivity. This is related to the assumption as well that real wages increase parry pass with labor productivity. So indeed, prices are supposed to be not significantly changed. There is no technical spillovers from a technological change towards labor productivity and green innovations. The two paths of technical change are separated, separated from one another. The second path of technical change is the one that increases emissions, the productivity of emissions. So it reduces the levels of emissions per unit of output. We define a green technology gap, which is a green productivity gap of emissions. And we consider this technology, this gap in technology gap between center and periphery as defining the evolution of international competitiveness, as I will show in a few moments. How the green productivity gap of the green technology gap evolves? We take the most, the simplest assumption, which is assume that the green technology gap moves as a function of the level of the technology gap, the Haiga, the technology gap, the faster is the reduction of the differences between center and periphery in green technology. This is an assumption that, of course, can be challenged. In fact, other specifications for this function can be suggested, but we took the simple one, the Haiga, the technology gap, the Haiga, the potential for the periphery to learn from the center, and the faster will be the catching up of the periphery with respect to the international technological frontier in green technology, which is given by the productivity, the green productivity of the center. I also assume that the level of the technology gap affects the behavior of exports, the export share, for different reasons that have been very well discussed in the previous presentation. So the rate of growth in equilibrium with balance of payments equilibrium will be a function of the green technology gap, and the Haiga is the technology gap. The lower will be the rate of growth compatible, consistent with external constraint. So I have a dynamic system of two differential equations. One gives the evolution of formal employment in the economy, the other one gives the evolution of the green technology gap. And this dynamic system shows an equilibrium, which is stable in the state net for the two state variables, which are formal employment and the technology gap. So we have a, five minutes, we have a stable equilibrium. We make some exercises in comparative dynamics. We assume a change in the absorptive capabilities of the periphery on what Freeman has called the technological infrastructure of the periphery, which allows the periphery to learn more and faster from the center. And we find that an effort of the periphery to reshape its institutions and its policies. And the direction of technological change towards green innovations leads to an equilibrium in which we have a Haiga, a rate of formal employment, and a lower technology gap, green technology gap between center and periphery. So this basically happens because green innovations have an impact on demand growth, and this impact in turn helps the economy to create more formal employment and help to raise the wage share in the economy. So we have a very virtuous dynamics here, associated with a strong technological effort in the periphery to create endogenous capabilities in green innovations. On the other hand, if the direction of technical change goes basically to labor saving, technical change, in this case, there will be no change in the rate of growth, because by assumption, we are assuming that price competitiveness is not affected and is not important in the rate of growth in equilibrium in the long run in the periphery. So we have a reduction in the level of formal employment in this economy. These are a very schematic presentation of the interactions you have in the northwest graph. The change, the transformation of the economy, the change in the income elasticity of exports and imports that moves the balance of payments constraint rate of growth, this has an effect in the northeast parameter, an effect on the level of formal employment in the economy. A, the distance between A and C is the difference, is the share of informal workers in the economy, and also in the southeast quadrant, you see, and the impact on the wage share. To this, we included an environmental constraint, which is the result of a previous work which Jeff Althaus and Giulio Guarini, in which we see the rate of growth of the periphery, which is consistent with certain objectives, with certain goals in terms of reduction of emissions, the goals that comes from the Paris Agreement. So this works as a constraint in terms of the rate of growth that the periphery can attain without compromising what the periphery itself, the Latin American countries in this case, promised to attain in terms of the reduction of emissions in Paris. We estimated for different sectors, the income elasticity of exports and imports, to see the rate of growth that the periphery, Latin American more specifically, can attain in the long run. We look at the importance, the critical importance that formality and low-level productivity have in the Latin American countries, and we estimated the rate of growth that it could be necessary to attain with this, with this structure of employment and with these levels of poverty to eradicate poverty in 2030, which is a rate of growth of 4% at least. This helped us to find as well what would be the rate of decarbonization necessary to fulfill the commitments of the Paris Agreements in Latin America. Minus 0.8% is the historical trend. We would need to attain minus 5.1% of reduction of emissions if we want to grow at 4%. And concluding, our simulation exercises with this very simple model show that the rate of growth necessary for social inclusion is higher than the rate of growth that Latin America can attain with its production structure and the income elasticity of exports and imports that presently our countries show. But even this low rate of growth with external equilibrium is higher than the rate of growth consistent or compatible with the promises that Latin America made in the Paris Agreements. So our main message is that we need, from one side, a very strong effort at building a welfare system in the region that allows to attain, to eradicate poverty with a lower rate of growth. And at the same time, we need a major effort at industrial policy and technological policy to reshape the export structure and to reshape the emissions, the level of emissions that the region is now producing, so that we can make a converge, the rate of growth consistent with external equilibrium, with the rate of growth consistent with environmental sustainability, and the rate of growth we need to eradicate poverty in 2030. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gabriel. Thank you. We move immediately to the next presenter on is labor flexibility a good substitute for economic growth for job creation? Jesus Ferreira.
Hi. Good morning to everyone. I would like to know if you can see the slides?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Gennaro. Well, good morning to everyone, and thank you. I want to thank you to the organizers of the conference for the opportunity to participate in this conference and in this special session. Well, in our paper, that is, as you can see, is a paper called by me with Professor Philip Aristi from the University in Cambridge and one colleague of my department, Carmen Gomez. The objective of our paper is to analyze whether labor market flexibility, namely, precisely employment protection legislation, is a relevant variable that explains the behavior and the results of the labor market, of the labor market in some European, in a sample of European countries. So the objective is to test whether the level and evolution of employment protection legislation helps to explain the evolution of the employment and the unemployment rates in a sample formed by existing European countries. In this sense, we can say that the final objective of our paper is to analyze, to test whether those reforms that have been applied in these countries, trying to make the labor market more flexible, has obtained a presumed positive impact in terms of accelerating the job growth and in terms of the declining unemployment rates. In this sense, I'm going very fast, trying to fix to the scheduled time. As you will know, the theoretical background of this analysis, that as you will know, for new Keynesian economics, labor market rigidity, specifically high and excessive employment protection, is associated to a bad performance of labor markets in terms of employment creation and also in terms of unemployment rates. And based on this belief, a significant number of countries, not only developed, but also emerging and developing countries, have approved measures that have tried to reduce the firing cost of workers and to facilitate the use of non-standard employment contracts, for instance, temporary or the part-time employment contracts, in order to reduce the high unemployment rates and to accelerate the employment creation process. This is, in this sense, there has been a spread of this kind of reforms, specifically since the end of the decade of the late eighties and nineties, and the decade of the nineties and the decades of the 2000s. However, the empirical evidence is not conclusive and does not support this presumed positive impact of the liberalization of labor markets and their regulation, we can say, of labor markets, in terms of the labor market results. Indeed, a growing body of research is recently concluded that in the case of our variable of interest, the employment protection, the employment protection does not affect employment or unemployment, and that precisely one negative, this research is detecting the existence of negative collateral effects of this excessive labor flexibility that has been generated by this reform. In terms that this lower, when I say too low, employment protection has led to negative micro and macroeconomics. has led to negative micro and macroeconomic effects. Although, as we can see, I have said there is a growing body of literature that focuses on the conclusion that these labor reforms have not had the presumed positive impact, we think that our paper makes a number of significant contributions to the existing literature. For instance, why? Because we present an empirical model that is quite different from the existing, most of the existing papers on this topic. That's for instance, among other contributions, our paper does not only, as most papers do, focus on the impact of employment protection on the growth of employment, but we also analyze the impact on the evolution of employment, the number of salaried employees, employees and also the evolution of unemployment rate. So we are focusing on the impact on three different variables. Moreover, in order to get robust conclusions, robust results, we are using two different sources for that on unemployment and employees that are coming from labor force statistics and national accounts data in order to analyze whether the use of these different sources of data can lead to different conclusions. Another difference with existing literature is that we are using, as a variable related to economic growth, not only the, as it's the normal procedure in the literature, they use the GDP growth, but we are also using the growth, the rate of growth of gross fixed capital formation. Because as you will know, many, especially post-Keynesian economists, pay a special attention to the role of investment as an engine of the employment and unemployment. We are also testing a linear, not only, we are not only testing a linear relation between the dependent variables and employment protection, but we are also testing the exist, the potential existence of nonlinear relationships and the existence of interaction effects between employment protection legislation and economic growth. Because, and this is an important point, because indeed, the theoretical literature argues that the impact of employment protection depends on the level of, not only that, let us say, the theoretical literature argue that there is, there can be a threshold that implies that below or above this level of employment protection, the impact of employment protection may differ. And also, there also is an argument that the impact of employment protection may differ depending on the situation of the business cycle and on the existence, say, of an expansion or a recession effect. And also, we are able to analyze a very long period that we are covering sixteen European countries for a period of thirty-five years. And this is important because we are now focusing on a very long period of time that, in our opinion, allows to avoid the problems that can generate the existence of analysis, empirical analysis focused on shorter periods of time. What can make that the results may depend on the period of the time analysis. And also, it allows to implement more efficient empirical models. So as you will know, most of the literature, existing literature, use methods like the Generalist Method of Moments that is valid only for shorter periods of time. And in this sense, the system of a longer steady time series allows to use more efficient methods. Here can be, for instance, the use of dynamic, fixed dynamic models. So, and you will, you can see in the slide, this is our variable, our baseline models, where we are trying, as I said before, trying to explain the behavior of three different dependent variables. The total employment growth rate, employees' work rate, and also the evolution of unemployment rates. And we are analyzing this evolution of the variables using as a main explanatory variables, the economic variable related to economic growth, and also the employment protection legislation, using in this case, the indexes provided by the OECD. And we are also trying to control, use control variables that can affect the evolution of the labor market resource. That can be, for instance, the evolution of the working age population, the train openness, the existence of other labor institutions. And also, for instance, some variable related to the differences in terms of the coordination and decentralization of the wage setting processes. In the, with this variable, with the latter variable, we are trying to control the possibility that the result may depend, for instance, of the framework of collective bargaining processes. We are also testing, we are testing our analysis, the possible endogeneity of these indices. And in this sense, we are, in the case that, this endogeneity can be detected, we are using instrumental variables trying to avoid these problems. And also, as robustness checks, we are testing the possible, potential existence of nonlinear effects of the protection and also the existence of interaction effects between employment protection legislation and economic growth. So, well, this is, in order to, not to consume too much time, I will go to directly to the, our main results. So as you can see in this slide, this is the, our variable, where we have analyzed the determinants of the growth of the unemployment rates. And in this sense, as you can see, the slides, what we are detecting is that the employment protection does not have any impact on the evolution of unemployment rates in Europe, in the sixteen, as I mentioned, European countries that we have analyzed it. And it's important to argue that only economic growth and also the growth of working age population are the variables that can be considered as determinants of the evolution of unemployment. So in this sense, we can argue that only economic growth matters for the evolution of unemployment rates in European countries. If we focus, if we move to the analysis of the determinants of the employment growth rate, we obtain a similar result. At this employment protection, the reason that not have any impact on employment growth rate and only again, only economic growth and the demographic elements proxy by the growth of working age population are relevant and determinant variables of the evolution of employment. In the case of the evolution of employees, of salaried employment, in this sense, the, our results cannot lead to, which are conclusive, conclusion about the impact of these variables. Because the results depends on, not only on the use of the GDP or the investment growth as a determinant of the, of the proxy of the economic growth. And they also are affected by the use or data coming from labor force surveys or coming from national accounts data. In this sense, we can say, we cannot say that they are robust results. And again, we can see all the economic growth matters for the evolution of employees. And as I said before, in order to get robustness checks for our results, we have also analyzed the potential existence of nonlinear relations and interaction between economic employment protection and economic growth. And we again, focus on the evolution of unemployment rates. Again, we can, the conclusion that we can get is that we cannot conclusively argue that EPL, Employment Protection Legislation, has any impact on the evolution of unemployment rate in Europe. Because again, the results depends again on the variable used, GDP growth or investment growth as a proxy for the economic growth and the use of the, of the source of the, of the data. In the case of employment growth, again, we are not able to have, we are not able to find a robust, significant nonlinear relationship between employment protection and economic growth. So the impact does not depend on the economic situation, on the situation, say, of the business cycle. And again, we have not been able to get a robust evidence that proves the existence of interaction effects between employment protection and economic growth. And if we focus on the evolution, on the determinants of the growth rate of salaried employment of employees, we are again obtaining a similar conclusion to the previous before. We cannot find a nonlinear relationship between employment protection and economic, employment growth. We are, cannot be, we are not able to find robust, significant interaction effects between employment protection and economic growth. And therefore, we cannot, and besides, sorry, we cannot get a robust and conclusive results about the impact, in this sense, of employment protection for permanent or for temporary workers in terms of the evolution of the employees. So, to conclude, in this sense, the results of our studies show conclusively that contrary to the new Keynesian economics, the employment protection does not affect the evolution of the unemployment rate with economic growth being the main and only determinant, together with the growth of the working age population, all the changes in the unemployment rates in Europe. Therefore, we can conclude that the labor reforms that have reduced employment protection for permanent and temporary workers have not contributed to reduce their unemployment rates. And as regards the impact of employment protection on employment, the employment protection again does not affect total employment growth regarding employees or salary employment. It cannot be argued that the employment protection negatively affects employees' growth because the results obtained are not robust as far as they depend on the use of the GDP growth or investment growth as an explanatory variable or the source of the employment data. Regarding the model that tests the nonlinear relationships and interaction effect, the results again are not robust and conclusive. At most, but with a lot of reservation, the only proposition that we could set or argue is that the higher the growth of the GDP or investment and the higher the protection for temporary workers, the greater decline in the unemployment rate. As far as employment and employees' growth is concerned, the results also do not allow us to claim that even employment protection affects employment growth. Again, with reservation, we can only say that the higher the employment protection for temporary workers, the greater the effect on economic growth on employees and employees. These results imply not only that the main determinant of labor market outcomes is economic growth, but also that we cannot evaluate and judge the effectiveness and the impact of labor market reforms that have made the hiring and firing of workers more flexible through or by the, through the analysis of the impact of this kind of reforms on employment and unemployment, since the results of our analysis indicate that they would have had no impact at all. Therefore, the evaluation of this reform would be determined by the existence of other direct and indirect effects on both the labor market and the economic activity. In this sense, and as I indicated in this contribution, although we have been able to expand on it, existing studies increasingly point out to the existence of adverse micro and macroeconomic effects. So we could assess this labor reforms negatively. As far as this analysis, most of them conclude that the negative impact on, for instance, elements like distribution, poverty, competitiveness, or even the economic growth in the long term are negative. So this would be the main conclusion and main contribution of our research. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jesus. Thank you also for staying within your time limits. So we will have two minutes more for the discussion at the end. Now we move to the last presenter, Marwir Davila Fernandes.
May I start? Okay. So, good morning. I think we are still good morning, right? No, we are good afternoon. Good afternoon, dear colleagues, professors and colleagues. Thank you for having me today. It's a real pleasure to conclude this session organized by the Structural Development Economics Research Group. The title of my presentation is "Demographic Transition and Economic Growth in Six European Union Member States." And this is a co-author project with my dear friend from the Croatian Central Bank, Leonarda Streljic. So the structure of the presentation follows very closely the structure of the paper. After an introduction that you kind of motivate our main research question, we will briefly revisit the balance of payments constraint framework or the balance of payments constraint growth model. And here we are referring, continuing the tradition of the presentation of Gabriel Porcile and Melissiani, we're referring to Tyrell's Law. And in the second part of the presentation, I will try to, 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 I will try to bring the problem of demographic transition into this framework and how we address this empirically, because our contribution here is mainly empirical. And then some final considerations will follow. So regarding the motivation, after, after three hundred years of unprecedented population growth, Europe is rediscovering the fear of population decline. And what do I mean by this? Just taking the Italian case as an example, and here is the reason why I like to move. On the graph on the right, what we have, the black line, the black line is the rate of growth of population in Italy without migration. And since, since late nineties or in the mid-nineties, if you don't take into account migration, the rate of growth of the Italian population is negative. And more recently, we are talking about a decline of 0.3 percent every year. And this is not just an Italian trend. You can see this for other countries. And in this presentation, I'll be referring to Italy, Spain, Portugal, Germany, Austria and France. I will justify our choice of working with these countries. Then if you take into account migration, so the rate of growth of the population, take into account migration, even in that case, you have a surge in the beginning of the 2000s. But again, after 2010, a recovery of this negative trend, and even if you take into account migration. Oh, thank you. Even if you take into account migration, you're, you're, you're again in a negative, in a negative position. So population is declining in a country like Italy. And this process of demographic transition is not happening just with a population decline, but you have an increase in the old age dependency ratios. So here, I will ask you to look at the black line again. And what you have is an increase in old age dependency ratios from less than twenty, so we were around fifteen, to something close to forty. And this is expected to go above fifty. What is the old age dependency ratio? Is the ratio of the population above sixty-five years old divided by the population between fifteen and sixty-four years old? So you have an increase in old age dependency ratios and the phenomenon of population decline. And what we are interested in this, in this, in this presentation is, is to provide a novel link, or what we believe is a novel link, between this process of demographic transition and long-run economic performance and long-run growth using, using Tyrell's Law, using the balance of payments constraint growth framework. We choose to work with these six countries because they, they kind of approximate two very different institutional frameworks. So we are thinking about Italy, Spain and Portugal as approximating the Mediterranean, south of Europe institutional arrangement. And then we have Austria, Germany and France as something more north, north Europe, and still significant population. So we are not talking about Nordic countries, their populations are very, very, very small. So that's what we are going to try to do here. And how, how can we introduce Tyrell's Law into this discussion? Well, the main underlying question at the end of the day is why the rate of growth differs between countries, right? And you have a more traditional approach that has been used to study the demographic problem. The traditional approach is, is a supply-side one, right? You see growth is depending somehow on the accumulation of production factors. You have capital, labor and some measure of technical change. And this is very much related to the availability, the availability of resources. It's still, still, I think Still, I think there is a recognition in the literature, in the growth literature, not only among alternative theories, that trade matters, right? Trade matters. And in the context of an open economy, resources can be imported. And then, if your import requirements, not only for consumption but also for production, if your imports require an increase with your level of income, then at some point, as your demand is increasing, as your income is increasing, at some point, you might hit an external constraint. This external constraint is not going to bother you if you have, in the words of Tyrell, if you can finance ever-growing deficits in current account. But that's not the case for most countries, especially to developing countries. And you could argue that's the case also of a significant part of most of the European Union, given that most European, at least those that adopted the euro, don't have a national currency any longer, right? You have a currency for the union. So, and in this discussion, in this discussion, we would like to highlight that it's not price competitiveness that matters, just like in a couple of presentations ago, Melissiani pointed out, it's non-price competitiveness that matters. So, anticipating what we're going to do here, we will try to link economic performance and demographic transition through non-price competitiveness in Tyrell's Law. That's basically our main narrative here. So, the evidence favoring why we are choosing the Balance of Payments Constrained Framework, we believe that there is significant empirical evidence and relatively recent empirical evidence giving support to the trade multiplier. I will refer to Tyrell's Law and the trade multiplier as interchangeable terms. And as I mentioned before, we are trying to bring some new evidence on the macroeconomic effects of changes in the population age structure using that framework. So, how we estimate Tyrell's Law? We try to follow the methodology proposed in the Journal of Comparative Economics by Filippino Zafami a couple of years ago, and we're going to use a state-space model and a Kalman-smoother to estimate exports and imports functions. So, the story here is imports depend on many variables, exports depend on many variables. But in our estimation process, these variables that matter for imports or exports will reveal themselves either through an income effect or through a price effect. So, in this first estimation, what we have is an equation for imports, when imports depend on the real exchange rate and an income component, and an equation for exports, when exports depend on the real exchange rate and an income component. That captures the income of the rest of the world, right? But why you are using the state-space model? Because it allows us to estimate the income elasticity of exports and imports that changes over time. And that's going to be important for us, right? So, we are not obtaining a unique number. We are obtaining an income elasticity that is going to change over time. And then, the ratio between these two elasticities, going back to Tyrell's framework and introduction by Gabriel in the previous presentation, the ratio between these two income elasticities gives us a measure of non-price competitiveness or a proxy of non-price competitiveness, recalling that the rate of growth compatible with equilibrium, the balance of payments, is just the product between the rate of growth of the rest of the world and this measure of non-price competitiveness, okay? So, when we do that, for our sample of six European countries, just some comments on the data, we are using annual data from 1971 to 2019. This data is in constant dollars. Exports and imports correspond to the value of goods, services traded with the rest of the world. And we are going to remove high-frequency variations in the data, business cycle fluctuations. We will rely in two filters. We use a traditional HP filter, and we also use the Cristiano filter just for robustness checks. Most, many of my results here that I will report in this presentation will rely on the Christian filter, but in the paper, we have the robustness with the HP filter. So, let's present some figures with our estimation results. When we estimate the income elasticity of imports and exports, we're able to obtain a measure that, indicators that change over time. The solid line corresponds to the Christian filter and the dotted line to the HP filter. So, they are moving more or less, more or less together. If we take the ratio between the income elasticity of exports and imports, what we're going to have, what we're going to have is a measure of non-price competitiveness that is in this column on the left, and we're able to obtain Tyrell's Law and compare the rate of growth compatible with equilibrium, the balance of payments, and the actual long-run rate of growth. So, in the case of Italy, Spain, and Portugal, we have the following trends for non-price competitiveness and for time constraints. I cannot spend a lot here in this presentation, but we have a detailed explanation in the paper. But when I estimate the rate of growth compatible with the balance of payments, the dynamic is quite close to what we actually obtain in terms of the actual long-run trends of growth in this country. So, that's comparing the solid line that gives us the actual long-run rate of growth and the dotted line, the dotted blue line, that corresponds to the estimated one using the theoretical model. The results are sustained for Italy, Spain, and Portugal, but we also have the similar for Germany, France, and Austria. So, the logic here is the same. Okay. So, how demographic transition enters this story? We estimated the price elasticities. They don't seem to be statistically significant. All the stories is going back to the income elasticities and our measure of non-price competitiveness. So, if demographic variables are to impact long-run growth using this framework, they should impact our measure of non-price competitiveness. So, at the end of the day, we're estimating non-price competitiveness versus a series of explanatory variables. We're interested in the demographic part of the story. And in terms of a demographic vector of explanatory variables, we will focus on the old age dependency ratio, and we will also take the rate of growth of the population. But then, we will disaggregate the rate of growth of the population with migration and without migration, trying to understand differences that might follow from that. And we will control for a series of variables that we think that are relevant. But if you have suggestions of other controls, we might add, we are open to that. We are controlling for human capital, the rate of growth of capital accumulation, total factor productivity, economic complexity, because there is a huge literature on the relevance of economic complexity and complexity indicators, the investment rate, government expenditures, degree of openness, public debt, the level of the exchange rate, and also some measure of income inequality. So, we are the top 1%, the share of income going to the top 1%. And we're going to estimate this equation using two techniques. Here, I report just one of them, but you have a series of robustness checks in the paper. We're going to rely on the weighted average last squares and the Bayesian modeling average techniques. The reason why we do this is because it allows us to tackle a model uncertainty. So, how many variables should I include in the model, how many I shouldn't? To avoid this decision is very ad hoc. That's why we rely, that justifies our choice of econometric estimation. So, how much time I have? No, I have a lot of time. So, we're good. We can talk a little bit about the results. So, again, we have many robustness checks in the paper, but here, I would like to call your attention for some of our main results. So, let's start with the first column. We are looking at Italy, Spain, and Portugal. So, our south of Italy, Mediterranean, south of Europe, Mediterranean Europe. And if we look at the old age dependency ratio, we have that for Italy and Spain, there is clearly a negative effect. This population is getting older and older. This is having a negative effect on non-price competitiveness. In the case of Italy and Spain, this is very clear. In the case of Portugal, it's not. And in our robustness checks, it keeps appearing that it's not that clear. But we have a similar story for Germany and for Austria. So, in our sample of six countries, Italy, Spain, Germany, and Austria, we find, we believe, is a robust correlation between old age dependency ratios and non-price competitiveness, a negative impact, right? In France, the story is different. In France, we actually have a positive relationship. And in the beginning, I was, I'm still a little bit puzzled about that. But for my co-author, this result is very normal, because France has, apparently, she is a demographic expert. And they have a very strong demographic policies incentivizing number of children. They have a very unique framework for tackling the demographic challenge. So, these are also interpreted in the paper as in line with very specific policies that the French have adopted. So, that's related to the old age dependency ratio. Let's go back to Italy, Spain, and Portugal. And what about population, population growth? If we disaggregate population between what we've, we talk like natural population growth, that means without migration. So, if you see the net here, it means without migration, and MIG is the part of population growth that comes from migration, okay? What we have is that in all south of Europe, the impact of migration is negative, which for us is kind of weird, because it means that if you have a positive rate of growth of migrants, you will have a reduction in non-price competitiveness. But then, if we go to countries like Germany and Austria, this impact is positive. And we will try to explain and we will provide some discussion on these results. First, why in Germany and Austria, there seems to be a positive impact from the rate of growth of migration and non-price competitiveness, and why the old age dependency ratios seem to be negatively related to most countries, to most countries in our exercise. So, we feel that we have, at least in what concerns the old age dependency ratio, we might have three main mechanisms playing a role. And our story, the way you are trying to sell our narrative, is that non-price competitiveness is related to what is happening in terms of productivity, productivity of the labor force. So, on the one hand, you could expect a negative impact from an increase in the old age dependency rate on non-price competitiveness, because as you have a decline in population, you're actually having a reduction of your labor market, of your demand somehow, or your potential consumers. But if you're reducing the scale of production, then a reduction in the scale of production, if you have dynamic economies of scale, this will reflect on a negative impact on your labor productivity, negatively impacting your non-price competitiveness. That's one side, one force. But then, you have a second force, a second force, that is coming from the exact, the reduction in the size of the labor force. As your labor force is shrinking, you might have an induced technical change story here. This means that the bargaining power of workers might eventually increase, and this will incentivize firms to increase their search for labor-saving production techniques, thus increasing labor productivity and having a positive impact on non-price competitiveness. Finally, you might have that an older workforce is less open to adopting new technologies, but evidence in this point is kind of controversial. What about the impact of, how much time I have? Three, four minutes? Three minutes, great. So, what about the difference between Austria and Germany regarding migration and south of Europe? We interpret our results as somehow related to the productive structure of these economies. So, if you have, in the kind of migration that you have in south Europe and in Austria and Germany. So, you have migrants that are arriving to work in a factory. The effect on that, on non-price competitiveness, is very different, that you have migrants that are arriving to cut olives or take grapes or fruits in Sicily, for example. So, we try to interpret these results, or we see this difference in the signs of the coefficients as the kind of migration that is happening in this economy. So, to conclude, two, three final sentences. We are trying to explore a novel link, at least we believe it's a novel link, between demographic transition and long-run growth. Most of the time, this relationship has been estimated in terms of production functions. So, people, or most scholars seem to be looking at production functions or something related to a production function. And we try to change the framework. We're looking to Tyrell's Law and the Balance of Payments Constrained Growth Framework. So, we explored this novel link between demographic transition and the trade multiplier and the dynamic trade multiplier. We found moderate net effects and significant heterogeneity. And this heterogeneity might be related to the mechanism that I just discussed. So, thank you very much for your attention, and that's more or less what I prepared for today. Thank you. With one minute.
Thank you. So, we have almost 15 minutes for discussing all of the papers which have been presented. So, anyone who has questions on any of the presentations? Yes?
Thank you. Thank you very much. I have two questions. One, just for the paper that has been presented for just as last paper. My question is this one. I find the paper really very interesting because of this novel determinant of non-price competitiveness. So, my suggestion is to, you present a sort of ex-post explanation of the possible channels. And I think it would be interesting to devote more time, I don't know the paper, but also in the presentation, to the possible channels. And especially because at the end, you were mentioning all channels that at the end go to labor productivity. So, my question is whether, in general, you think that the demographic transition impacts on non-price competitiveness only through its impact on labor productivity? And if this is the case, then why, let's say, adopting such a broad approach? Or whether you find also some other independent channels that go directly to actually your real variable, that is the export elasticity of income? And then, I have another question for the paper on the labor flexibility and employment and unemployment. Because in the conclusions, you basically say that the only relevant variable is economic growth. And I agree that there is a lot of evidence on that in the paper. But I was a little bit curious on some of the results that you consider not so robust, but indeed, I think they were significant, that are the results on the interaction. So, the interaction between the flexibility of the labor market and economic growth, where I saw some, let's say, negative sign, if I remember it well, of flexibility, but then a positive interaction with the economic growth variables. So, if you can spend some words on that result and why you have not stressed it too much in your conclusions. Thank you.
Jesus?
Well, thank you very much. Well, regarding your comments, the as you can see, the explanation of our conclusion that we cannot get a robust conclusion about the existence of this interaction effect is that, in our opinion, in order to get a conclusive result, these results about the significance of the interaction effect should not be affected by, first point, the use of the GDP or the investment growth as an explanatory variable related to economic growth, to the economic dynamics of the economic activity, or say, to the situation of the business cycle, and also to the use of the sources of data for employment and employees. Because you will remember that we are using two different sources of data. They use the data coming from national accounts and the data coming from labor force surveys. If the results were robust, the conclusions should be the same in all the cases. That is, the variable that we are considering should have a similar impact in terms of value, in terms of sign, and in terms of significance, regardless of the use, the difference in the use of the GDP or the investment growth or the sources of data for employment and employees. And the problem is that whenever we find a significant result in terms of the existence of of an interaction effect, this result is not replicated, let us say, it depends dramatically on if we are using GDP growth or investment growth or depending on the source of data. So, these results are not the same in all of the specification of our models. Besides, there is also, in some cases, some strange data. Because for instance, in some cases, when we use, I don't remember now the variable, but there is one variable, that for instance, we are able to find a significant impact on the a, a significant, significant impact on the interaction effect. But for instance, the, the variable, say GDP growth or investment growth, taking it on an individual basis is not significant. So this is why we say that we can, although we conclude, that we argue that we cannot find this. We cannot argue that there is a, uh, an international effect that explained that the system of this effect. At best, we can only find, at best say, and also we must take it with a lot of caveats in the case of employment protection, in the case of, of unemployment. But as I said, the, these results are not replicated in the other specification of the model. So this is the reason why we say that these results are not robust.
Thank you. You want to answer?
Thank you for, for, for the point. And I, I think it's very, it's, it's very important. I, I kind of see our analysis as an exploratory one. So when, when we started the project, we were like, our intuition tells us that if I'm starting from a demand-led growth approach, so if I don't want to use a production function, any long-run factors, the, the main, the main horse model, the main model in demand-led, among demand-led growth models for the long run, we, we, we kind of see it as, as Tyrol's law. So our, our, our feeling was that something should happen with the non, with the non-price competitiveness. And our analysis was more exploratory, so we, we wanted to see what was coming out. And once we obtained the coefficients that we obtained, we would try, we, we tried to find an explanation for that. So that's, that justifies the order. And when we were trying to find an explanation, we were like, okay, there is a, a literature that already exists that suggests a non-price competitiveness responds to labor productivity. And these channels might be, might be working. But you are completely right, we haven't checked them. And that's maybe something that, that should be our next step. So, so thank you very much.
Any other questions? Yes.
Thank you. My question is about the last, the last paper. And I'm, I, I must admit that your work is more technical and I'm not expert of the subject, but I have a little observation about my, my own clarity. Would not it be good to, to identify the regime changes in the policy variable by computing the Marko regime switching model and transition probability matrix? So I just want to know whether it is interesting, interesting or not, whether it is relevant to your work and whether it would be good to identify, identify changes in the regime related to your policy variable that you use in your analysis by computing more, transition probability matrix? Thank you.
So sorry, Corinna.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, sorry. Okay. So thank you very much. Again, this, this, this point is, is very important. We haven't, we haven't looked for, for regime changes, but I think it's something that could, could, could be done, definitely. I, I'm, I'm not sure if in this paper, because with robustness checks and all, we are approaching 50 pages. But maybe as a follow-up, so once if we are able to sell this, the, the idea that a possible link between demographic transition and, and economic performance among alternative theories, among demand-led theories, could be Tyrol's law, then a second step or a, or an additional step could be to identify this, this regime changes. But I completely agree with you and thank, thank you for the suggestion.
Any other question? We still have three minutes.
I just have a question.
May I ask you a question?
Melania, yes. Just the question concerning your model, because you spoke about technological competitiveness from different factors and you estimate the role of universities. And was, there was a variable of universities, how do you define? Why universities play a very important role in competitiveness? And the second question concerning the, you spoke about the, that evidence of technological competitiveness as the complementary variable? How could you define it?
Jose Luis, you have a question?
Yes, I have a quick question to Gabrielle. Gabrielle, can you think in some mechanisms that make the adjustment between the three rates of growth in your model? The social rate of growth, the balance of payments rate of growth and the, the ecological sustainable rate of growth? There is any mechanism? For instance, I'm thinking in the real exchange rate as a device to try to adjust the balance of payments growth with the, the, the rest of them.
I understand that this session will be closed in two minutes. So I'll give the floor to Gabriel for his reply first.
Thank you. Thank you, Jose Luis, for, for your question. Indeed, the, of the three rates of growth, the only one for which there are mechanisms that produce this equilibrium is the balance of payments constrained rate of growth. Because in this case, a debt and a foreign exchange crisis could lead the economy to, to, to this position. But there is no market force that could lead the other two, the, the economy to attain the other two equilibrium, the two rates of growth necessary for sustainability, which is the social equilibrium and environmental equilibrium. Only policies, so a very careful combination of policies, including as, as you yourself and Robert Blecker and others suggest, a stable competitive real exchange rate and the, in that, a, 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 a set of policies towards industrial change and technical change could help the economy to move towards this sustainability. So policy and the political economy of industrial and technological policy could be central to, to, to this process to be successful. Thank you, Jose Luis.
Thank you. You want to answer the question?
Thank you for the question. Yes, we basically, universities are measured as the number of universities of each country that participate in European frameworks. So it's really measured in terms of their participation in these green networks. And the technological competitiveness is at the national level. So it is the number of green patents for each country. So the interaction basically says that there are some complementarities between being part of international networks with universities, but at the same time, having developed a national capability in technology and in particular in the green, in the green technology. So this complementarity between the two things is the major driver of green competitiveness. And also enhances the competitiveness of the business sector, so of firms participating in, in networks. So if you have, let's say, only firms participating without universities, this is going to produce not the same kind of effects that you have when there is a mixed participation. Therefore, a larger number of universities taking part in the networks. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for a very lively discussion, very interesting papers. And it's now time for lunch.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Thank you.
My greetings from Brazil.
I'm from Uruguay too.
And Spain.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye.